Commissioner Stewart is at a funeral and said she would be late to go ahead and start. We have three items of business, a brief discussion around Project Champions, discussion on code enforcement, and on sediment and erosion control. I'll entertain a motion to adopt the agenda. All those in favor? Four zero. Okay, I placed in front of every board member the, something that it sent out, call it Board Champions. It's basically projects that we as individuals are together as, in pairs, as, as board members will champion over the next six months, lead the, the way on. We have to, we don't have to assign ourselves to this today necessarily, as much as make sure we're in agreement with these, and then next week at our informational sessions, make sure we assign ourselves and, and share the workload, so to speak. From a housekeeping standpoint, we need to evaluate the town attorney. That has not been done in many, many years. You can read the action that's required there, and that's really a combination of two board members, any two of the six, sitting down, going through the current uses, responsiveness, costs, legal needs, et cetera, determine what, if any, recommendations and improvements need to be made, gather the input, not only just from the six board members, but the town manager, and as the town manager shares any, any staff input as well, and, and we conduct that in open session. Town audit, we do that every year. We need two people to, this year, be a part of the, the committee itself that actually entertains what the auditors have to present, and then coming out, make a recommendation to the board on either approval, or, or some suggestions on what the audit shows, and then we're at that stage where we need to recommend, probably recommend a new auditor for the, for the next, for the next year. It's that time of year where we evaluate the town manager. We need to do that by July 15th. 2015 marked the first time in several years. We've implemented, implemented a performance review process of the town manager. We, we started that process with, as all six board members participating in it, and amongst us to, to actually go through the process of capturing, working with Wendy to make sure, it remains anonymous, but we capture the various inputs, and then one of the two actually review it in closed session with all the other board members with Warren. My suggestion would be, once since we started the process, that one of the four members who were a part of it from last year, maybe take it forward again this year, just for continuity's sake, but again, that's, that's upon us very, very quickly. And last year was, Mike Stewart did the verbal part, and, and I did the process part, working with Wendy. That's how we did it. Boards and committees, this one's probably already assigned. Basically, with the new comprehensive plan, new UDO, new ordinances, first ever growth management system, it's time to take a look at our Board of Adjustments and Planning Board, and see what's needed as we go forward. I know Fred and Commissioner Burl and Commissioner Warner spent some time Friday with Dennis and Warren and the Council of Government to begin that process, and we, we need to do that in a timely manner, but we can, as we did last year, defer the, what we did last year was, we deferred the appointments for, I think it was either a month or two, as we kind of got that together. That's not the case with Main Street, and Kurt will be bringing forward some recommendations on that, based upon his work with Sherri Adams and the Main Street group from the state. But that one's probably assigned, given that it's the Planning Board and the Board of Adjustment. Community survey, we're committed to that. We need somebody to take the charge and work with some professional organizations that will be provided to us by Warren and staff, as to do our first ever, really comprehensive town survey, and that's really driving that, and making sure that, A, having done that with the town manager search, there's a lot of work to get the questions right, and making sure we're asking the right questions, and, and something like this is going to be much broader. Hiring Warren, it was easy to get to 10 questions as to, never mind, I just, that was a much shorter survey, because we were very focused on the skill sets that we wanted for town manager as we get, as we move forward. This is much more broad, and, and the anticipation is, this would be our benchmark year, and then we would do it every other year. Communication strategy, that's a to be determined, once that gets finalized with, with staff. Commissioner Stewart has brought forward a, we started in the first board meeting with a, some thought processes around, for the big decisions, a structured decision-making framework. Commissioner Stewart brought forward some ideas, and she's, she's not here, but if, if we want to go forward with that, if she wants to go forward with that, she would work with somebody and actually lay that out. What's, and the idea there is to make sure that we're all in agreement with the types of data that we need, as we make some of these tough decisions that we're going forward with. So it's clear to staff, and there's no guessing from, you know, what do the Board of Commissioners want this time? Well, we'll try to make it a little bit clearer if we get that in state, in place. We need to develop a legislative agenda. I see you call it a state agenda. It's really a legislative agenda, which really comes in multiple layers. We need to come up with, and I will volunteer to write something with the Mayor Pro Tem. I volunteered him for the Town Hall Day, that's coming up June 8th, and I'm hoping to have something where we can share it at the information meetings next week, as to the two or three things. I think Commissioner Warner and Commissioner Fitzgerald did it last year, so we won't ask you to, to, that's a lot of work, to try to frame that up, and so we'll take that, and Commissioner Burl's going with this. Commissioner Stewart declined to go to Town Hall Day. That's a piece. We also have the opportunity, I got a note Friday, from the League of Municipalities, it's that every other year cycle, so I need to orchestrate with all of you. It's, it's that time of the year, it's that time in the sequence where we get an opportunity to share and ask for some new agenda items to be added to the League's two-year agenda with the, with the state legislature. We have to have all of our input in by the end of June, so that's the timeframe that's, I'm driving to there. And probably the first step, our retreat's going to be later, but we'll go back to the League agenda, 50 items, and see if we got five there, and see if, for instance, the Donut Hole annexation really, really hits what our issue is there. I know I had a brief conversation when I was up in Raleigh the last time, and asked them to take a look at it, more from a public safety, transportation, and education view, because it impacts that, but we got some work to do there. And then Manager Wood has scheduled a meeting for myself and him, along with the County Commissioner Chair, Mr. Rushing, and Manager Coto, so we can have an interaction, municipality to the, to the county, so they understand where we're coming from. They openly admit that that's not something that they've done, and, and they wish to start to get a better handle on the needs of Western Union County, and we volunteered to be the first out of the chute. They'll have finished their budget by then, they'll have finished the fire tax by then, they'll have finished their interactions, maybe, with the Union County Public Schools by then, so we'll have a better interaction with them in terms of things that are on our list. So what I'd ask for, obviously, open for discussion now, for a little bit of time, but what I'd ask for is for everybody to just give it some thoughtful reflection, and if there's one, two, or three items that you really got a passion for, to really work on, let John or I know, and we'll try to, we'll pull it all together, and we'll start that discussion next week in our information session, so we can get this work assigned. So I'll hush and entertain discussion at this point. This is something we haven't done before, so trying to really take some, take a different tact here, and really get at some things that really the board needs to champion workload-wise. Thoughts, questions, discussion, anything?
Sure.
I can't tell, are these on or not? Because we're not hearing anything back.
Okay.
Huh? Okay.
In light of your list of assignments, Jim and I did meet with Warren and Dennis, and some of the suggestions that came very readily from COG were things that, you know, perhaps the other members of the board should hear, and get an idea of, you know, how, how passionate Jim was about his suggestions. The very first one, I believe, and you correct me if I'm wrong, Warren or Jim, was that the, the town board needs to set the expectations. What do we want this planning board to do? How far do we want to go? Do we want them to do all the activities that are allowed them by the state legislature? And probably not at first, but then the other thing that he mentioned was that, as far as committee chair for that, that that should be something that as we move into the future, should be selected by this group, that we should recruit, interview, and select the county, you know, the, the planning board chair. And then some of the follow-up suggestions, I think were very good, was as we begin this process, to have an attorney, and an outside, outside attorney, and an outside planner, for maybe the next six months, brief the planning board chairman before each meeting, attend each meeting, to make sure that things are going correctly, that they're not stepping out of bounds, or that the questions that are being asked and answered are appropriate, and then after the meeting, debrief. So did we do well? Is there something we can do that's better, and so forth? And I think that's, you know, a hands-on kind of idea, and I think if nothing else, it shows that this board wants to pay attention to the planning board, and that's a good thing just by itself, and we can't help but do better. And then the wider suggestion was, if that's successful, maybe you apply that to the other boards and committees. But do one at first, just do one.
And Warren, didn't you tentatively indicate that we may do a work session around a select set of board and committees?
Yeah, June 28th.
June 28th?
Yeah.
June 28th?
Yeah.
So I gave Kurt the nod, so. You gave Kurt the nod for Main Street, and so given Commissioner Burl's comments there, I'm guessing that he's giving himself and Jim the nod to take the lead on the Planning Board.
Yeah.
And you've already started.
Yeah, we could try to bundle all that up.
Okay, great. And I agree with both of you, that's, it's long overdue for the Planning Board. Any other comments? All right, so we'll finalize this next week, and I'm guessing everybody wants to get on to that topic of code enforcement and sediment erosion control. So we'll go there. Just briefly, Lori Oakley has assumed the responsibility for code enforcement administration in the town, and in addition to that, in the recommended budget, there's going to be one additional position assigned to that task if approved.
Difficulties, there we go.
Natalie, could you kill some of those lights? Number one.
That works.
That's it, they're already on those.
This is the clerk in training here?
Yeah. She doesn't have her certificate yet. Natalie worked in an IBM silo, intercontinental ballistic missile silo when she was in the Air Force, so.
Good thing you, you went that way with IBM.
Yeah.
So Lori, take it away.
Mayor, members of the Board, Town Manager. I'm here today on behalf of the Code Enforcement Division, and my presentation today is for informational purposes only. And what I will talk briefly about, code enforcement, what is it? The history of code enforcement, where we are at today, the process, the code enforcement of tomorrow, new potential changes in code enforcement, and also give you a rough timeframe of schedule of what we're looking at. So to start off, code enforcement responsibilities, what exactly do we enforce? We enforce the Town Code of ordinances, and some of you may have seen it, most of you probably have. It covers everything from high grass to traffic and parking, from animals to junk vehicles, and different entities are responsible for different sections. For example, the Police Department enforces animal control. Town code enforcement enforces high grass. We've also got zoning enforcement out of the Unified Development Ordinance, and also very popular is sign code enforcement also out of the Unified Development Ordinance. So any violations that could occur from the U D O, particularly we see a lot of sign violations, is something that the Code Enforcement Division would be handling. Code enforcement history, some of you might not be aware, but back in 2010, code enforcement used to have a designated position, it was the Code Enforcement Officer. Up until about 2010, code enforcement was often proactive rather than reactive. In 2011, the Code Enforcement Officer position was then combined with the Building Inspector position. And the following year, we saw an increase in the number of building permits issued, and additional building inspectors slash code enforcement officers were hired. In 2014, as building inspections increased and housing increased, code enforcement started becoming more reactive rather than proactive, and less code violations were issued. So the code enforcement of today, what are we out there doing? Number one, we are in high grass season. Rain does not help when it comes to high grass, and then having people cut their grass, it's kind of hard to do with the rain we had last week. That is probably the number one violation that we're looking at right now, where we spend most of our time. Also, illegal signs, bandit signs, one of my favorites, especially coming from zoning. Our neighbors to the north and west allow bandit signs on the weekends for subdivisions, and you see them here, and people, jurisdictions treat signs differently, so we do have a lot of sign ordinance violations that we do catch often. Abandoned nuisance and junk vehicles, I don't know if I've quite seen that vehicle in Waxaw, but we have come across quite a few junked vehicles. And I will say that in the past, code enforcement did not do a lot of handling of junked vehicles. The previous staff handled a lot of high grass issues, so this is definitely a new realm that we're tackling there with nuisance and junk vehicles. Speaking of nuisances, nuisances such as the open storage of furniture, appliances, building materials, just accumulation of trash and garbage. Since we've started the division a month ago, we have mostly been reactive, we're trying to now get to the time where we're being more proactive. But a lot of the violations that we've gone out on have been called in or emailed in. A total, as of today, we've had 56 violations. I'm happy to report that 41 of those have been resolved at 73%. Seven of those are in progress, where we're working with the property owner, which would bring us to an 86 percentile. And then the remaining eight, we're still working, a lot of those are foreclosure properties, so we're working with banks, we're also working with out-of-town property owners, but we are actively working with those owners. Other regulations that we've enforced, street obstructions such as basketball goals in the road wide of way, that tends to be a pretty common one. Commercial vehicles parked in the road wide of way, accessory structures erected without the proper permits, dumpster screening, minimum housing, we are now tackling our first minimum housing violation in conjunction with the building inspection staff. And also businesses operating in homes without the proper permits and approval. And those are probably, the ones I listed are the most common ones that we are dealing with. So code enforcement, the process. So right now, the complaint is received or observed and is entered into our Intergov software. Then the site is inspected. If a violation exists, what we do first is we knock on the door. We attempt to speak to the property owner. If no one is home, then we leave a door hanger. And if the violation is then not corrected, a notice of violation is issued. That violation will list a timeframe in order to comply. If that violation is not corrected, then a civil citation is issued, and at that point, the town has to hire someone to go out and cut the grass or remove the debris, whichever violation it is, and then a lien is typically placed on the property. What I have on the screen in front of you is just an example of a notice of violation. Our ordinance does require these to go out by certified mail, and they cost $6.48 per letter that we mail. So far, we've mailed, I think, three or four. So what we came up with were these handy-dandy door hangers, which have been very, very successful. I'd say we've had at least a rate of probably over 75% success with the door hangers. And for example, we had a complaint from a lady about Sharon Drive. Can you ride down Sharon Drive? There's high grass everywhere. We went down there, we left nine door hangers, and we spoke to one person that was home. Of those 10 cases, nine have been mowed, and the only one that has not been is a house going through the foreclosure process. Those door hangers cost us about 30 cents. We can get them even cheaper if we order them in bulk, so that's a huge saving by adding that step in rather than going straight to the letter. So code enforcement of tomorrow, two positions devoted to the Code Enforcement Division. As Warren stated, I am the Code Enforcement Administrator. Currently, we have a part-time Code Enforcement Inspector, Amy Merrill. I think most of you know Amy from the smiling face from the permitting division. We're hoping to snap for July 1st if approved, because we are very busy in code enforcement. And right now, we have Amy working in the mornings with us. Also, as part of the Code Enforcement Division, and I let this at your seat, we have a map of zones that we are slowly trying to get into. As I stated, right now, it's been a lot of just catching up on code enforcement. So what our goal is, you can see by the different zones, the town is broken down into Zone 1, 2, 3, and 4. Our goal is to do two zones per day and to alternate days so people in one community don't get used to us coming on Mondays and Wednesdays. So we can shake it up a little and the next week maybe come on Tuesdays and Thursdays. But to break code enforcement down into a zone, so we have a more effective way of going out there and riding through the town. And while talking about code enforcement, as I mentioned, we currently have a Town Code of ordinances, and what we would like to do is implement or draft a new section in there and call it the Community Preservation Ordinance. It has nothing to do with historic preservation, what we want to do is call it Community Preservation Ordinance, because number one, it just sounds better than saying code enforcement. Also, it kind of achieves the town's goal of preserving the community, because by cleaning up the town, making it more aesthetically pleasing, you are preserving the community that you live in or work in. So what we're doing is working on that new ordinance that we hope to present to you later this fall, and I'll touch on that in just a second. And what that new ordinance we hope will do is position the town for future growth by improving the aesthetics of the town, again, through the proactive use of code enforcement and throughout the entire town, with of course a concentration on the entry corridors, because we want the people that come here to visit us to, you know, see a pleasing town and decide to live here, open up a business, et cetera. Going back to the Community Preservation Ordinance, so we have a pretty good ordinance in place right now. We do believe it needs some fine tuning, and what we'd like to do is to take it in the existing Town Code of Ordnance, where chapters are sporadically spread throughout the code, and bring it into one chapter, so you can easily go and find everything you need, kind of like the Unified Development Ordinance. What we envision in that chapter, tall grass and weeds, abandoned nuisance junk vehicles, nuisances such as discarded furniture and appliances, trash and debris, minimum housing, street obstructions, but keep in mind that there still will be items in the U D O that will stay in the U D O that we will enforce, such as signage, that's commonly contained in the Unified Development Ordinance, also requirement of permits and dumpster screening. So we still will be enforcing U D O requirements, but everything in the Town Code would be housed in one chapter. So in looking at that one chapter, we looked at our neighbors to see if there's anything that maybe at this time we need to look at adding to that chapter. And we came really across two topics. The first one is some of our neighbors do not allow parking in the front yard. And when I say parking in the front yard, I mean not on a paved parking space or gravel parking space. And the picture clearly demonstrates, if you're just pulling your car in and parking on the grass in front of your door. I had one complaint about that previously, and I actually just got another call this afternoon about two cars in another subdivision that are literally pulling in, going through the driveway, and parking on the grass in front of the door. We do see that in neighboring jurisdictions, we think that would be good, and that's probably something that we will propose to you in the new draft ordinance. Another item that some of our neighbors have is regulating the storage of boats, campers, and RVs. Now, when I originally drafted this, I thought that might be a great idea, and then I drove through the town and I realized we have a lot of boats and RVs currently, particularly in non-HOA-regulated subdivisions. And of the, I'd say 12 to 15 that we saw, they, most of them were in the side yard, some of them were in the front yard, some of them were covered, and in a lot of instances, there was no backyard to park them in. So I think that could create a challenge for a lot of the existing property owners if we start regulating the location of the storage of boats and campers and RVs. So at this time, staff's not proposing that addition unless the Town Board would like us to look at that. We're just looking at the parking in the front yard on the grassy area.
The question is, would you help those communities that have regulations in that regard?
Yes.
Okay.
And actually, I have drafted an email out to the HOA today and had Dennis look at it, and it'll go out tomorrow, also letting the neighborhoods that do have the HOAs, that we're here, we have a new division, we're here to assist you, and definitely we'll work with the neighborhoods that don't have the HOA. That's where we've been spending a lot of our time throughout the town. But it just seems that a lot of the people that have those campers and RVs, they don't have somewhere to place it, so then you're looking at a storage cost for them. Other item that we looked at were trash rollouts. This is common in some of the neighboring jurisdictions, particularly in the city of Charlotte, and that is regulating the location of where they are rolled out, the location of where they can be stored, and the timeframe for when they're rolled out. When I talk about the location from when they're rolled out, and the diagram shows it in the sidewalk. I don't know if you're familiar with the case in Charlotte that happened within the last two years, where a trash can was rolled out into the middle of the sidewalk, and an eight-year-old boy rode his bike out the road and unfortunately died because of the place of the trash can. So we did want to look at the location of that. Other jurisdictions also regulate the time. Some state that they have to be in by the close of, the end of that day, some give you till the next day. Typically, that's often regulated in subdivisions with HOAs, but it's not in the rest of town. Also, where they're stored. A lot of them that we saw were stored in the side yard or in the rear yard, we did see a few that were stored out front. And I already talked about location, and also when they can be rolled out. So those were two areas that we were thinking about presenting to the Town Board this fall. And while talking about those, I want to briefly take you through the timeline. So the Code Enforcement Division was staffed April 18th with one person, and then as of May 1st, we got a part-time person, and code enforcement began again in the town of Waxaw. What we're doing right now, May through July, is we're working on drafting this new ordinance, this new Community Preservation Ordinance. In August, what we would like to do is take the draft of that ordinance out to the community, to the entire community, and see, and go over the draft with them, talk about the ordinance. We've met a lot of people that just didn't know we even had a Town Code. Today, we met with a lady who had two untagged cars in the road for three years and she didn't realize she couldn't store them there. So a lot of people don't even know of the existing Town Code. So we want to get out there in August, propose, talk about the existing and the new code, and get the public feedback, and then bring it to you for presentation and adoption, we're hoping in the fall. And during this whole timeframe, of course, we will still be working actively on code enforcement within the town. So I want to wrap up with what I like to call the Code Enforcement Collaboration Case. So back in April, right after I started, we received a complaint about a shed in town, and that picture's on the screen in front of you, at 600 Miller Drive, and that it was not meeting code. Amy and I went and talked to the property owner, we sat down with her in her living room for about 20 minutes, and she told us how she had to move the shed because it was over the property line, and in doing so, it completely damaged the one side of the shed. There's holes in it, it was just ripped apart. Elderly lady, and she explained to us how she was on a fixed income and couldn't repair it. We asked her, could we talk to some of the community members and see if we could rally up some support for her shed repair? Absolutely. So we reached out to members of the community, particularly in the east side of town, and talked to them about her shed issue. Calls were made, and the next thing you know, lumber was being donated, people started volunteering their time, and I'm happy to report that as of today, at no cost to the property owner, that is her shed. So we're very excited about that, and it couldn't have been done without members from the two churches of First United Presbyterian, Wesley Chapel AM Zion, and Sheila Craig, a resident in the east side. But they made that happen, so we're really excited about that, because code enforcement's not just about, well, you can't do this, or you have to improve that, but it's also about working with the community and just improving the aesthetics of it and helping people in need. That is all the presentation that I have for today, and if you have any questions for me, I'll be happy to answer them.
Questions?
Comment? Thank you very much. Any chance of getting some summer help while you're gearing up?
All the help, we love additional help.
Summer help for kids.
Can retired people push a lawnmower?
You can.
We can instruct.
Yeah. I would like to say, one of the things that I'd talk to Lori and Dennis about is oftentimes with code enforcement, you have frequent re-offenders. It's a lot of times just the same people. So developing a process with what might be coming forward with some recommendations on how to streamline that and fast-track those folks so they don't have to go through the complete total process every time if they trigger some number of violations in the event or a certain period of time, getting them on a faster track to get their issue resolved. Go ahead.
The only thing that I'd add is, living in a community that has an HOA, you're going to have to educate those communities because they don't know where the town ends and the HOA begins and vice versa. And then when they can't get it done through the HOA, they expect the town to jump immediately, which is unfair to you and the town. So there's some education, I think, that's going to be needed with those groups as to how to best work with the town on that stuff.
Okay.
Not that I have one in particular that probably is confused. And you're right, it tends to happen with the grass and the growing season and the chronic offenders and the process that one has versus the town has, et cetera, so.
I'd like to say, I appreciate the job that Lori and Dennis have done with this. I mean, they've really taken this and run with it. I get more or historic- since the short time that I've been here, I get more code enforcement complaints than you might think. And since they've started on that, that number has really tapered off. I think there are more issues out there than what we realize there, you know, or want to realize that there are. And so I know they're going to have their hands full playing a lot of catch-up early on. But thank you.
This is great. Any other questions, comments, thoughts? Okay. Thanks, Lori.
Thank you.
I would like to say one little thing. I says, parking in the front yard leads to the next erosion control. Parking in the front yard kills the grass and leads to erosion control.
Go ahead.
Mayor, Board of Commissioners, Mr. Town Manager, I'm Dennis Rory, Development Services Director and Town Engineer. I'll be presenting today on our proposed erosion and sedimentation control program. Just before I dive into kind of the step-by-steps of the program, I want to maybe keep a conversation that started, at least at the board retreat, on several kind of topics that I'd outlined and Manager Wood had outlined were important under kind of now the growth management umbrella and sediment and erosion control was one of those topics. So this is a continuation of that dialogue, not necessarily new information. It's just an update of what's happened since that particular point in time and maybe where we are today and a little bit of where we'd like to go in the future. So I wanted to give you that context so you knew that this wasn't a new conversation. It was being started, but really a continuation of some existing dialogue. So right now, as we stand, erosion control, sediment and erosion control or sedimentation and erosion control, these all mean the same thing. That authority rests with the state of North Carolina, specifically the Division or the Department of Water Quality. And so they are responsible for erosion control plan review services and inspection services and also any sort of violation or compliance services. And so before I dive into the details, a lot of this dialogue today in this presentation is really about kind of a call for action, so to speak, for the town to really look into taking over those services and providing those services so that we can give the community a higher level of environmental controls as it relates to the cleanliness of the water that meets our creeks and streams. So that's what this is about at a high level and I'll get into the details. Just in terms of how do we go about starting something like an erosion control program? The state has outlined a seven-step process of how we do that. Each one of the steps should be before you in your presentation and to the right of each step, you can kind of see where we are. So steps one through three have been completed. I will pass around some information that really speaks to steps two and three a little bit later in the presentation. And we're currently, I guess, at step four. I think, Mayor, do you have a question? Okay, I thought you had a question. So just wanted to kind of lay out what the steps were. So enabling authority, I've hinted at this earlier, right now, all of the sediment and erosion control authority rests with the state of North Carolina. They are providing that service for us here locally in Waxaw. However, through the Sedimentation Control Commission, they do have the ability to delegate that authority to qualifying local municipalities that have a program set up in place that they would get a chance to review and on, I'm pretty sure, an annual basis audit to ensure that it's- it meets the state's standards, the state's performance standards. But they may delegate that authority if we were to follow through with all of steps one through seven that I showed you on the previous slide. So just a little bit of information of where this is coming from in terms of the enabling authority. And the big question is kind of why? Why would I want to continue this dialogue? Why am I kind of before you today talking about this? These are- some of these pictures you've seen before, these are in Waxaw and this really documents some of the issues that we're having. If you look to the picture to your left and left on the screen for those behind me, that's a catch basin that is pretty much on the brink of receiving all of that built-up sediment runoff from the site construction that's occurring. I won't name the neighborhood that that's coming out of, but this is happening on an active construction site. And so what happens after that little bit of silt fence that's bowing inward, once it collapses, all of that sediment gets into the pipe as it continues to rain. Those pipes empty out into our creeks and streams and you start to have ponds that look brown and creeks that look really brown. In a heavy rain event, you'll see some more pictures moving forward. Also, on your right, while that looks like a small little puddle of water, which I think in a relative sense it is small, that's a symptom of a much bigger issue if you look at the color of the water. Color of that water should not be that brown. The reason that it's brown is because it's turbid water. It has a lot of sediment that's built up in it. And to me, it's a symptom of a larger problem and the larger problem is sites that are under construction. Right now, Waxaw probably don't have the- not probably, but in my opinion, don't have the proper sediment and erosion controls in place. Silt fences, basins, skimmers, these are technical terms, but the point being is once you have those things in place, you have a better chance for that water to be clean, but also there's an enforcement component. If no one's watching the hen house consistently, then that can be a problem, clearly. So we'll move on to another slide. On your left, you'll see a brown pond. That pond should not be brown. You've kind of heard this speech before from me that that was probably one of the most alarming pictures until the one on the right, someone showed it to me and I said, man, this is not good. I generally am not a very animated person. I think people will tell you, I'm just generally not that animated, but when I saw these pictures, I think it kind of surprised some folks at what my reaction was. And the big thing for me or really what's encouraging for me is these things are correctable. They're very correctable. A call to a contractor, a call to a developer that says, hey, your silt fence is down, you need to reestablish your erosion control measures. In fact, if you don't do that, we're going to stop construction. We'll tell you, you can't build until you get this stuff cleaned up. That's generally very, very motivating for people to hear that you're going to stop a construction site until they clean it up and they'll generally go out and do it. However, if that doesn't work, we can go to the violation stage of things, which the state allows a $5,000 a day fine for any violations of erosion control measures. But these things are very correctable. Most folks in the industry, the construction industry, the land development industry specifically know about these features and know when measures are set up properly and when they're not. And so right now, we just legally don't have that authority to make someone comply. We would have to make that call to Mooresville, rely on their staff to make the call to whoever the site superintendent is or the developer to make those corrective actions. So just to keep rolling through the slide, let's show you a little bit of maybe what proper sediment erosion control setups and sites look like. You can see this is a- this is a pond, a sediment basin that's meant to catch all of the really, really brown water. And granted, it's a little bit hard with the angle of the sun, but if you compare what a sediment pond looks like on a site that's been properly stabilized to the color of a non-sediment basin, two very different shades of orange, in my opinion. If anything, this is supposed to be very, very orange because it's being screened by these baffles being filtered before it gets into these PVC pipes and released to our permit streams and creeks. This is a temporary basin that will go away after construction is over with. Again, this is a permanent pond that was in place, quite frankly, before the development was put on- placed under construction. Now, just a couple of key details, not to get buried in the weeds, but a part of why this condition is not nearly as severe as the other one, in my opinion, is you have a slope that you can see grass that's kind of starting to grow in. A part of the rules and regulations would say you need to stabilize your slopes within a certain period of time. So as the water- as the rainwater occurs, you don't have these deep gullies that kind of start to develop within the slope and you start running really brown water or orange water down into the sediment basins. If you look at this site, look at all the lush green around it and you have a well-defined erosion control area. So as you can see, the water runs from whatever construction site that's occurring. It enters into this area, this portion of this sediment basin is called a four bay. It comes in at a pretty high rate of speed. The stone has two purposes. One, to slow down the velocity of water, but also to filter out the really, really big clumps of dirt. And then you get kind of a- your primary basin area that goes through another screen and even more stuff is screened out. Yet again, there's a third screen before it reaches this outlet structure and then presumably what's behind this berm is a creek. That outlet structure sends a pipe directly into the creek and this is not treated water like you would see at any sort of water or wastewater treatment plant, but it's much, much less turbid water than would otherwise be released at the initial discharge point. Again, just a lot of stone to control velocity. You have stabilized slopes. You can see some silt fence running along the tree line. Also, you have kind of your construction fence as well. This is generally for tree protection, but this is also a form of erosion control, believe it or not. And then something as simple as washing truck tires. Washing truck tires before they enter our public streets have a designated area where someone has a garden hose and they spray off their tires before they get into our entire public street system. These little things, again, they're, in my opinion, very small things that can be done that have a pretty significant impact as it relates to sediment erosion control protections. So just so that, you know, we all kind of know where we are in our overall, I'll call it Development Services permitting framework. You've seen a version of this diagram probably at least three times now. The two red boxes indicate where we are. We're kind of in a- the plan review phase and also the inspection phase. Again, as a reminder, this- the state currently does the review work, issues the erosion control plan approval, sites go under construction and we're currently relying on the state to do the inspection work. If the town were to take over this service, these boxes would become town provided services where we do our own plan review, our own erosion control approvals, sites still continue to go under construction and we locally do the inspection work. Just getting real detailed on process, I won't spend too much time on this slide unless you all need me to, but this is generally what a developer would experience as they walked in the door from the application process all the way until the inspection by staff, which is really the closeout of the erosion control, sediment erosion control process. So just to run through an example, this is a site that's already under construction or actually already has been built. You can probably read the name of the neighborhood, but I won't necessarily call it out. This is kind of if we had a program in place, how this- how this program would have responded at the time at which this development proposal came through. It would have followed the process outlined on the previous slide. We would have issued a $500 for the first disturbed acre fee plus a $100 per additional disturbed acre fee. And I guess the name of the neighborhood's called out right there. So you have thirty- a little over 36 acres. You can run through the math and see for what I'll call mass grading, the entire site, there's about a $4,100 fee that generally the developer would have to pay. Now, as each individual home gets built, there's an individual lot fee for sediment and erosion control as well. For these phases, there were 112 lots, kind of doing the straight math, that's almost $31,000 in erosion control, sediment and erosion control review and inspection fees with the combined total right at about $35,000 for that particular- those particular phases. You know, those fees would come back into the town to be used for town purposes, not necessarily going to the state where they go currently. Just a little bit of guidance information for the home builders so that they know kind of where to set up. Yes, sir. Yes, sir.
What are those state fees?
What are- what are- So these fees were modeled after Monroe's fees, which I believe were modeled directly after what the state was doing, but I'll need to follow up and confirm specifically kind of what the state's charging. So this is just technical guidance information for an individual home builder so they don't have to feel like they're doing rocket science. If water's flowing to the rear of the property, set up some silt fence towards the rear of the property. Conversely, if it's flowing to the front of the property, put some silt fence at the front of the property. It's just really kind of some basic guidance to anyone who would be building a home. And I will pass around, I didn't want to inundate you all with huge packets of information, so this is just one complete packet that has all five of the things that are on the presentation in place. It's just a draft ordinance, proposed fee schedule, just as the presentation says, with a checklist that's really meant to be an external checklist for developer, engineer, or home builder so that they know what the expectations are. There's a legal requirement that you have to identify who's financially responsible, who's financially responsible in the event that there's a problem on site. And then there's also a maintenance agreement that's generally required of the developer or home and/or home builder to sign to ensure that the erosion control features are properly maintained over time. So I know I said a mouthful and I think it was pretty quick, at least felt pretty quick to me, so if anyone has any questions, feel free to ask whatever questions you may have.
Just, Dennis, it's been a long time coming. Thank you for doing it. In your best- what's your best estimate when you think you'll have this up and running?
Well, I'll say this, it's going to be tied in with some of the budget conversation that you have and with the manager. So we're, I'll say passively, we're doing some things now in terms of spot checking things and calling the folks in Raleigh when we see it. So we're more active than we have been. I would say up and running. If we're in mid-May, it would depend on the Erosion Control Commission, but I would say maybe by August, we could be fully up and running if we were given the green light by the board to pursue this, but also by the North Carolina Erosion Control, Sedimentation Control Commission.
Thank you very much.
And if that schedule were to somehow change, I'll definitely, you know, update, update the entire board.
Questions? Okay, do they know we're looking at it?
They don't know we're looking at it. This is actually, in their recommended steps, we're following their steps the way in which they've outlined it. So, we documented the need, we kind of understand what the rules are, we have a draft ordinance, I'm passing around at least one copy right now. We've done some preliminary planning, but it has to, it has to go through the Board of Commissioners first, so they know that we're ser-, so they being the Sediment Control Commission knows that we're serious about doing this.
So, let's assume it all happens in, it's September. For those developments that started under the state, do they turn those over to us? Like Millbridge is going to have a number of homes left, Lawson will have homes left, et cetera. How does that work?
So, I would say the phases that are currently under construction would continue out with, under the rules that are in place right now, and I would, the state would do that closeout work.
Any new-
Phases under construction.
Any new phases, those would come to us.
My guess is, if they've paid their fee to the state, and the state's going to follow that through.
And the state would have subsequently issued a permit, then that would still rest with the state. I could see administratively, just what may happen, is if it were to, if all the stars were to line up and we were to take over the service, then I could see the state potentially losing significant interest in watching over those, and maybe we would need to pick up our interest in watching over those, even though the permitting happened somewhere else. I think they're just struggling right now from staffing-
Resource-wise, yeah.
-to be responsive.
Yeah, I was just going to say, just the common theme here with building this growth management system, with what the board approved, with the new traffic impact analysis ordinance a while back, and having our interests looked after. The way we were doing it before is not good enough for Waxahau, because we've been taken advantage of. The nuisance issues in the community, that's not good enough anymore, we're going to address those. The sediment and erosion control, the way things have been done, that's not good enough anymore, we're going to address those. So, there's going to be a common theme of taking ownership and responsibility for these things, and doing it right, and looking after the town's interests.
Which is great. Other questions?
And the likelihood that the state will still give it to us, that's pretty well a good deal on that, Bill?
I believe so. I think, I think it's really going to, from their perspective, I believe it'll come down to, do we have, do we have things like checklist, and rules, and fees in place? Do we have expertise in place? Do we have staffing in place? I'd say the answer to all of that is yes. A lot of what we've done preliminarily is built some of the checklist and other things, after what some of the other municipalities in Union County have in place right now, so that anything that we were proposing wouldn't be inconsistent with what they've already seen, and quite frankly, wouldn't alarm the market, i.e. home builders and developers, that we're doing something that's radically different than anyone else. It's just about being consistent with, quite frankly, what other competing municipalities are. So, I don't, I don't see it being a very risky thing for the state to turn those services over.
Radically different, only in maybe that we'll enforce it quicker.
Well, it'd be radically different from what some folks have seen in Waxahau, what developers have seen in Waxahau, but some of these same developers may develop other places in Union County, and they're seeing these rules that I'm proposing already in place in other municipalities. So, it's, it's, oh, well, this is what we're already doing in jurisdiction X.
So, where's the county on this?
Where's the county on?
Their erosion control. So, taking it a step further, so with our donut holes, just thinking of our town boundaries, would the county be interested in us potentially managing erosion control within our city limits, whether it's county property or not, so we have some consistency?
Be a jurisdictional issue.
Right, I mean, it's certainly a, it's certainly a question that could be-
That's what I'm getting at, yeah.
-asked.
But there is no ETJ, Ontario jurisdiction in this county, so how do you determine?
Yeah, it would probably have to be structured in some form of inter-local agreement, or some MOU, something to that nature. We haven't taken it to that step, because I think we were trying to kind of get-
Yeah, no, I get it.
Right, the town stabilized first, but we certainly have that dialogue, because we're having it with them on other things.
Right. And just, this is probably an unfair question, but maybe something to think about, is there anything, just thinking outside the box, as we think of our go-forward two-year legislative agenda, is there, is there anything that we need to offer up, or be thinking about that, maybe to get the, you know, to put it out there? You don't have to answer now, but, you know, perhaps, given where this has eroded to, so to speak, I'm not trying to make a pun-
Understand.
-but it's deteriorated rapidly, and so, just a thought. Other questions? All right, thank you.
Thank you.
Well, that kind of covers it for the work session, so entertain a motion to adjourn. Some of, all those in favor?
Aye.
We'll see you back here at 6:30. Everybody but the chief.